Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town in Dewey Beach Mutley Town Council Meeting. It's being held on Dagsworthy Avenue on Dewey Beach Life Saving Station as well as via Zoom. It is Friday, July 21st, 2023, and it is 3:00. I'd like to convene the Town Commissioner meeting, starting with the opening ceremonies of first Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands what is limited to God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Start with roll call. Commissioner Bauer.
Present.
Commissioner Givings.
Here.
Commissioner Jazinski.
Here.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
And Mayor Bill Stevens is here. We also have Chief Speak, our Town Manager, Bill Zupper, and Council Fred Townsend, as well as other members of Town Hall. Can I have a motion to dock the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anybody here or online that would like to have a public comment for an element that is not on the agenda, I'll give you the opportunity to come forth with any public comment you'd like to make. Kate, is there anyone that you can see on Zoom right now? Mr. Burr, do you have a comment you'd like to make, a public comment you'd like to make?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me okay?
Okay.
My concern is, I own a house in Dewey Beach, and on my block alone, there are five public parking spaces where the owner adjacent to those spaces has improved, if you want to call it that, modified the modified the town public parking space in an obvious attempt to prevent people from parking there.
Mr. Burr, could you repeat your address, please?
24 Salisbury Street.
Okay. Thank you. Continue.
Did you hear me up to this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's an obvious attempt by the owners of the adjacent houses to discourage people from parking there. It's a legal spot, but two of them have grass, one of them has concrete, two of them have paper blocks placed there by the owners. They never use those spaces. They all have off-street parking. They just do it to discourage people from parking in front of their house, and it interferes with their view, you know? Several times, I've been walking down the street, and I see someone standing by one of these spaces, holding a parking ticket, looking very puzzled and upset and saying, "I don't get it. I have a parking permit." This was the one that's covered by grass. So you see a public space, it's literally a public space, it's covered with grass, you're supposed to, the driver thinks, "Well, gosh, this must be somebody's front yard, I can only park halfway into it." So of course, they're halfway too far out into the road, and they're going to take it. Or they see these spaces and leave Dewey Beach and go spend their money in some other town. We don't want that. And if there's five spaces like this on my block alone, there must be like 100 in the town. How can the town allow a homeowner to place improvements on public space? If I go to the sidewalk on Route 1, and I don't know, I jackhammer up the sidewalk and put a planter there, am I allowed to do that?
Well, Mr. Burr, it's not common for me to reply to the public comment, but I will let you know that by letting us know, as other members of the community have, of when people have taken advantage of the front of their home, the Town Manager and Town Hall will take care of it, and we'll send somebody out in the following week to take a look at the property adjacent to you at 24 Salisbury.
Can you give me any indication of what that would be? It seems to me the owner should have to remove those improvements. These parking spaces should be sand or gravel.
And so that's what we have done with other spaces.
I'm sorry?
That's what we have done with other homeowners, is ask them to remove those signs or obstacles. So we'll take care of it.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Kate, anybody else?
That's it.
All right. Updates and announcements. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kate? So real quick, this is what the curfew sign would look like, depending on what the fine, if you leave it like this, or if you change the fine. But that's a draft of what the sign would look like, and it's important that we get these signs out there, so when the police are out giving warnings and then enforcing it, it's out in the public, so they can see it. Next, Kate? So this, you know, fences up. The good news, the fence is up from Collins Street. The bad news is, it only went to Swede Street, and that's because that's where the Army Corps of Engineers did the beach replenishment, and that's all that they funded it for from there. So from really, from Swedes down to Chesapeake Street, I'm going to have to work with Denrec to try to get some funding to do the snow fence the rest of the way down. Next? So the mulch. This is great. The Dewey Beach Civic League did a great job working with the town. We have, the Center Islands have now been mulched, and the Civic League paid for that. It's a great beautification project, so thank you so much to the Dewey Beach Civic League. Next? And this will lead me into what Todd's, Captain Fritschman's going to be talking about. These are some photos from his rookie test.
I know I couldn't do that. Not tall enough.
And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Captain Fritschman.
Strong enough, but not tall enough.
Strong enough, not tall enough.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Captain? Captain?
I'm here to just present some general statistics. I believe that's what my objective was for today, so I'll go ahead. To date, so far this 2023 summer season, we have been involved in one major medical response with basic life support. We have had 5, 10, 15, 20, 27 minor first aid responses. What distinguishes major and minor is whether transport is needed by advanced life support. So that's what categorizes those two statistics. Civil Code violations, we've had 11, and two of those have required police interventions, where we've called the police department to assist us with noncompliance to Civil Code regarding alcohol and behavior. We've had four missing persons. Obviously, all those people have been recovered and returned. Sound, no problem there. Some took a lot longer than others, but all returned. Open water rescues, four. Open water assists, three. Beach evacuations, complete beach evacuations due to inclement weather and lightning, four. Water evacuations, five. Marine life evacuations, we're not tracking that. That's in response to baitfish balls going down our coastline, inshore, right in the swim zones, where we remove everyone from that situation to avoid what may be underneath in responding to reflex arcs of people in that feeding zone, so to speak. There's a certain word that we're not allowed to use in our industry, so we don't use that word, but marine life is how we categorize that. We do evacuate the water column for excessive marine life to prevent any injury. Let's see, first aid responses, I did that one. Let's see. Our only real debacle this summer, not a debacle, but our real challenge was, this year more so than ever, was the June bug weeks. We had about two weeks, about 14 days of the June bug time, where it was excessive, more than we've ever really had before, I think. That was pretty challenging, keeping them in order, keeping them in proper behavior and kind of literally babysitting that large group of schools and so forth on the beach. As you can see now and witness very easily, Dewey is now, after that June bug two-week period, a full-fledged, full-family unit resort. You look up and down the beach now, it's full family units, from great-grandchild all the way to the great-grandparents. We will be sending a team to the National United States Light Saving Association Championships in Virginia Beach in August this year, so we are now beginning that process of identifying all the legitimate competitors. We do have a benefactor for transportation and housing already. A local businessperson has stepped forward to pay for all that. Now we'll be obviously going around fundraising, trying to get enough money to cover food and other things involved.
How much more do you need, Captain? Do you know?
We don't know yet. Yeah, we haven't, we're just now getting into that stage of determining all the costs and everything. We just found out that we qualified last week, so it'll take some time trying to do the work and actually get ready for this. These are secondary. This is all secondary to the job, so.
Let us know when you figure it out.
I will. Yes, right away, let Town Manager know. So with that being said, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to host questions.
No? We're good.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Captain.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'm going to have Kate just talk about a packet real quick that she's putting together, that she is working on to put together.
Sure. So we played with some ideas over the years of how to officially welcome our new homeowners to town. When we receive transfer tax documents, the only contact information we have is a permanent address, so any initial correspondence needs to go through snail mail. Having bought a condo myself a year ago in Robith, I know that you are just flooded with a ton of stuff from insurance agents and real estate agents, and everyone's trying to get your business, and it's information overload. So the goal here was to create something that won't be easily tossed into the pile of stuff. So our new homeowners are going to receive a full 9-by-12 envelope with a colorful design. It's clearly coming from the town, it's got our seal on there, a welcome home message, so we hope it's something that they're excited to open. Inside, most importantly, they'll have the new property owner guide, and this is just a really nice overview of property ownership in town. It's full color, gives some history of Dewey Beach, introduces them to the different departments and points of contact, reviews all the need-to-know info, beach tax, renting, accommodations tax, building permits, coastal weather and flood information, parking, dog licensing, et cetera. Most importantly throughout the guide, it directs the reader back to our website and encourages them to sign up for alerts there, so they can continue to receive the most up-to-date info. They'll also receive a copy of the latest Town News Letter in print, a welcome letter from the mayor, and a current copy of the Chamber of Commerce Visitors Guide. And they're also going to have a card there that they can bring to Town Hall to receive a welcome gift, and they'll be given one of the cooler bags from the, it has the town logo on the front. These were purchased some time ago with the marketing budget. And this is nice, too, because it invites them into Town Hall to meet the staff, and we can put a face to their name. And just for fun, we've thrown in a vinyl sticker, too, advertising our new slogan, Delaware's Favorite Playground, and these materials are ready to go, so they'll be distributed, starting with the next round of transfer tax. And I like to think this is a revolving project, so if there's any ideas you might have of additional content, they are more than welcome. That's it.
Thanks, Kate.
That's it, sir. Great job, Kate.
All right. Committee reports. Commissioner Bauer.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Persinger.
No report.
Commissioner Givings.
Investment Committee did not have a quorum, so we've been rescheduled for August 4th.
Commissioner?
No report.
He said 8-4 on the Investment Committee.
Yes.
All right. Next item is for the approval of the June 16, 2023 minutes.
Motion. Second.
Any other conversations, any changes required? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's been approved. Number one, discuss a possible vote to repoint Lane Ball, Kay Sullivan, and Marlene Tar to the Board of Elections for a term of one year.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number two, discuss a possible vote to approve Robert Day, Rick Barreling, Paige Martin, Phil Winkler, Susan Trenjer, and Stephen Eckerman as election officials for the 2023 Dewey Beach municipal election.
Motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss a possible vote to repoint Dave Lyons to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of three years.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Mayor? Excuse me, I failed to have Captain Fritschman present one of these individual awards. If I could just
Pause.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Captain Fritschman.
I was up here.
He just wanted to get away from the microphone, I know.
Yeah, so I'd like to take the opportunity today, if you don't mind. We have with us tonight Ian Noonan. Ian has been with the Dewey Beach Patrol in the past for four years, and last year he was elected, he was voted by his peers, Lifeguard of the Year for the town of Dewey Beach. He served exemplary status here during his tenure. He's now moved on and into his career and occupations and so forth, just graduated from college. He was a standout college athlete and the type of person that we look for here to assume leadership and train and manage the younger people. It's a shame that he had to grow up.
We don't actually ever grow up.
Don't forget us little people here.
Yeah, it's a great pride and privilege that I present the 2022 Dewey Beach Patrol Lifeguard of the Year to Ian. People, come on.
To watch him get a picture. Ellen wants to get a picture. We gotta do it.
You got it.
But first, we gotta get a picture there. Smile for Ellen.
Sprint team people are all out working, so look into that.
All right, thanks. Thanks. Yeah, I'll keep it brief, I don't have a ton to say, but I just want to say thank you guys for all the work you guys do behind closed doors. You know, a lot of it isn't seen or appreciated as much as it probably should be, but I mean, I have nothing but fond memories from the past four years being down here. I mean, some of the relationships and experience that I had have been pivotal in my development as a young man and a leader and an adult. So again, just thank you for the work you do and allowing us to be out there. I don't even perceive it as work when I'm on the beach. I mean, it is work, but I don't feel like it's work, because I enjoy being out there so much, so.
So Ian, what are you doing now?
I just graduated from Colorado State University, Pueblo. I'm looking into grad school.
Okay. Very good. Congrats.
Thank you all very much. Have a great day.
You, too, sir. Thank you. He'll be back. They always come back as Town Manager. Number four is discuss a possible vote to approve a proposal from Remington and Vernick Engineers for a infrastructure project to improve flooding of Reed Avenue. Town Manager, do you want to discuss this at first, because then decide whether or not we're actually going to proceed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thanks. So in the two years that I've been the Town Manager, a little over two years, Reed Street on the bayside has been a continuous flooding problem. We've tried a couple different things, moving the rocks that are around the end, clearing out the three storm drains at least twice since I've been here with camel trucks. And then what we finally did was, we took the baffles out. The baffles were defective, we took those out. It's done two things. One, when we have rainstorms like we did this morning, it drains very quickly off that street now when the tide is out. The problem is, and I think you saw some of my responses to some of the residents on Reed Street, is when we have a full moon with 25 mile an hour winds and a high tide, the water comes back up through those three storm drains and floods the street. So the water is moving very well through those three pipes now. So we asked Remington and Vernick to come down and look at that, and they've suggested that we put flaps on the end of those three pipes. Jim Deedee's and I have gone through this proposal. We feel, number one, that it may not work. We want more information from them, we want them to come down and show us how the flaps will be applied to the end of the pipes, and it's rather expensive. Right now, the estimated cost is $63,000. So we are definitely not ready to recommend it for a vote, but we wanted to let you know, since we do have the residents on the street asking questions about what the town is doing, I want the town to know, I want the residents to know, we are working on this, we are trying to address this issue. It's just not on this street. All our storm drains, as you know, go out into the bay, and the way they are set is when the tide is high, whether it's on Rodney Street or down on Collins Street, the water has no place to go when the tides are high and those pipes are filled with that water. It's only when the tides go back out, we're able to get that water to move back out, and that's, it's going to be very costly if we end up doing a lot of work on each one of those storm drains at each end of the street. And even on some of the private streets, there's some problems with drainage. We are letting Del Dot know about the problems with those streets that are with Route 1, where we have a large amount of water build up, and we're trying to work with Del Dot to address those issues. But if you have any questions about the flaps that SPS and Remington and Vernick is proposing, please let me know, but right now, we don't feel that this, we have enough information to proceed with this.
So just to clarify, the baffles that used to be there is basically what you're looking at putting back in, but they weren't working before?
So the baffles are what we took out. They were inside the pipe, and we had no way to get to them to clean them. These are flaps, so you have three pipes that go out into the bay.
So it would be different?
These would be flaps at the end.
Okay.
And it would be set on a timer, and when the tide is high, the flaps would be closed, and when the tide is low, the flaps would be open. Or we could manually open and close them during major storms if necessary. But I'm just not sold yet on this solution. Number one, when you look at those three pipes going out into the bay on Reed Street, I don't see how the flaps are going to be able to go move up and down.
So are you saying they're manually adjusted, like someone, every tide has to change them?
No, they'll be set on a timer.
Okay.
It's set with the tide. It'll correspond, so when the tide goes out
Right.
the flaps will open. When the tide comes in, the flaps will close, and they'll be on the outside of the pipes, so you can go out, if you have to, do maintenance on them or clean around them. I'm just not convinced that what they're proposing here, it's just not enough information for us to say, this is something we should proceed with right now.
Yeah. I mean, just for history, probably about eight or nine years ago, they did go in for the baffles that were there and fixed them, and then whatever the repair was didn't hold. I don't know if you remember that.
I don't remember, no.
But at one time, those baffles were fixed, and then they fell out of repair again. And my main thing is, whatever we do, there's going to be demand on multiple streets, as you pointed out, to do something similar, to help everybody, right? So whatever solution we figure out, even if we start on one, we should kind of expect that we're going to have to do it on multiple streets who have similar problems, it's just not as severe.
The only comment I make is, I believe that the stormwater master plan, there's more streets emptying there, more areas emptying there than anywhere else.
It's one of the largest
No, it's the worst one, for sure.
The other thing is, we have applied through Senator Coon's office for a $2 million grant to address this issue. It's still pending. It's made it through the first phase of the senator's office, but it could be up to two years away before, if it ever gets approved, and we would be looking for something on a much smaller scale than we did down on Bellevue and Bayard Avenue.
Okay.
So just a couple of questions. Would your plan be for this particular project to use infrastructure account money?
It would be.
Okay. So have you talked with the Infrastructure Committee about this yet?
I have not.
Okay.
I don't know, when we voted on that allocation, that we voted on, I guess, earlier this year or late last year, was the allocation had a fair amount of money, and it may have included enough funds to cover this. I don't know.
It does, not this.
I'm not sure.
But it's your thought that it need to go to Infrastructure?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that's, we cover that, because I think we all want to do something for Reed Street, because that really is the biggest problem, and you know, if we have a good proposal, I think we want to get started as efficiently as possible.
Right. I think the main reason I asked the mayor to put something on is, was the voice from the people in Reed Street, because we don't have an infrastructure meeting scheduled yet, and we had this meeting scheduled, so I wanted the folks to know that we are working on it. We weren't, I wasn't going to ask for the money tonight, it needs to go to the Infrastructure Committee.
Okay. Well, I mean, if you decide that you're ready to support it after finishing your diligence, just let us know.
Is there anything we can do at this meeting in order to, when you have a proposal that you want to send, to have it automatically go to Infrastructure versus coming back here to go to Infrastructure and come back?
That makes sense.
I don't think we have to vote to send it to them, I think you can just do that.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, I think you just schedule a meeting and get that done, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
So once you're happy with the bill, send it to Infrastructure there before it comes back here. Thank you. Number five, discuss a possible vote to amend the staffing plan of fiscal year 2024 in accordance with the Section 8(c) of the Town Charter. I'll give you a little bit of background on this, and this is more of a clarification. I've had conversation with the chief, as well as the Town Manager, and the question that I could not, that I was not clear of after review of the charter, is if the chief is, and I'll let you chime in, chief, is that as council, we approve the budget, and we approve the money that gets allocated for the fiscal year. If the chief figures that how she wants to spend it is different than we budgeted, for example, and I'll have her talk about this, using it for more full-time staff versus less seasonal staff, then I believe that from our requirements, it's, she has the budget to work within. We don't run police departments, it's not our job to run police departments. The question I have, though, is, you know, I'm going to let you all obviously speak to this, is when we do, if we do increase the staffing, this is a long-term investment in the police department. So it's not just using funds that we have not used for this rest of the year, it is a long-term review. So Chief Jabo, any comments that you'd like to make?
I'd like to read something that I put together
Sure.
in regards to this. In the six months that I have led this agency, I'm very pleased with the progress we have made. I feel this proposal will be a keystone in providing consistent professional police services. I have shared some ideas in this document to give you an overview of my goals for increasing manpower, to include the benefits of increasing authorized strength. I'm convinced that this manpower increase would greatly enhance the agency's capabilities and increase officer safety while also improving the level of service we would provide to our citizens and visitors. Staffing. For a 12-hour shift plan to work with no peripheral situations such as leave or injuries, et cetera, we must have a staffing minimum of eight. This number does not include the two command officers, myself and lieutenant. So far, this schedule has been a challenge in that early this summer, one of my men suffered an injury that took him out of the lineup. I would propose the addition of three full-time positions to build in enough manpower per team to create autonomy within the team, i.e. by staffing each patrol team with five full-time officers. This allows for things like illnesses, annual leave, and training to be fulfilled without pulling manpower from one shift to staff the other. This would allow for a minimum of two officers working at all time. Small agencies have difficulty granting harder leave or sending officers to mandated enter critical training. Increasing manpower eases those burdens and gives the agency latitude to create a favorable working environment where leave is granted, job enrichment is fulfilled, and mandates are met. Although each patrol team would be staffed by five, two would be assigned the day shift, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and two would be assigned the night shift from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., with the fifth slot being the sergeant who would work in overlap to oversee all four personnel. With the addition of these three positions, we would staff two teams with five officers per team. The K-9 unit would be assigned to a power shift rotation, i.e. four 10-hour day, working the optimum hours for when K-9s are most needed. The K-9 would be position number 11, with Lieutenant Dempsey being the operations lieutenant number 12, and me filling out the roster, 13 full-time officers. With the addition of these positions, we would still rely on bringing in outside agencies on summer weekends, however, the number of officers needed would be reduced. Concerns that we would have more officers than we need off-season, I believe, are not warranted. This plan would allow for a minimum of two officers working each shift, which is a necessity. As we have seen and I've been told, this town is becoming less and less a seasonal destination, and now has a vibrant nightlife for approximately 10 months of the year. All agencies experience decreases in calls for service during the winter months, such as January and February. Having a strong background in training, I would use the off-season to ramp up our officers' training rotations and begin to identify and develop each officer's expertise, such as officers would be developed in areas that they have demonstrated interest in, such as traffic enforcement, criminal investigations, instructor certifications, evidence, and collision reconstruction. By doing this with our personnel, we are offering job enrichment and satisfaction, which in turn is going to increase retention and create a satisfied and motivated workforce. Realistically, policing has always been a profession that suffers burnout and/or has lateral movement from one agency to another. Some officers just want to be a trooper, or at least have an agency that has various full-time units that we don't offer, such as SWAT, aviation, dive teams, full-time criminal investigations. So although 13 full-time officers would be ideal, reaching that number is possible, maintaining it may be more of a challenge. It is realistic to predict that when an officer reaches the four-year mark, which is now in state law, that they can leave after four years. Contract term for a new hire would have an increased likelihood that they may move on to another agency. Our seasonal police officer program. Truly, our seasonal police officers are that critical stopgap measure that allows us to heighten visibility and be a force multiplier in dealing with low-level nuisance crimes. They are energetic, enthusiastic, and willing to place themselves in harm's way with two weeks' training and no firearm. I am impressed with the officers we have and am delighted that we have this important tool to get us through the summer seasons. Seasonal officers are restricted in their knowledge, skills, and abilities to only handle civil and low-level criminal offenses. Seasonal officers are of no tactical value in dealing with dangerous or violent armed felons. Seasonal officers do not possess a skill set to conduct in-depth criminal investigations or inquiries. I feel our agency could not get through a summer without this invaluable program. However, I believe in the past that we have relied too heavily on these officers and in some cases have, have been having them handle incidents that are, that are clearly outside the scope of their skill set. Peripheral duties and responsibilities of our full-time personnel. Having come from three previous agencies where officers were asked to make, asked to wear many hats and be a jack-of-all-trades makes me qualified to understand the dynamics that are required to be a valuable officer within a small agency. I have every officer in our police department carry out multiple duties in addition to their patrol functions. Some examples are body worn camera program, evidence storage and processing, quartermaster, vehicle fleet, vehicle staff inspection, scheduling, training, firearms instructing, use-of-force instruction, recruitment seminars, seasonal officer academy, bike maintenance, firearms armor, delges coordinator, supervisors, court liaisons, and many, many more. These jobs would be more evenly distributed with the increase in manpower. Examples how, of how quickly staffing shortages can occur for us. During a busy weekend, we investigated the report of a serious sexual assault. Because of physical evidence and an out-of-town suspect, exigent circumstances existed. It took my entire on-duty staff and additional staff from the previous shift to safely and effectively write, get a judge's signature, insert a criminal search and seizure warrant. The primary officer on this case worked 17 hours that day. During a recent stabbing arrest a few weeks ago with two combatants, the officer had to conduct a criminal investigation with one suspect at the hospital and one under arrest at the station. It required both officers that were working to work the case. That means we had nobody left over to handle any other calls for service. Officers had to hold over to provide coverage. The primary officer, officer on this case worked 18 hours in a row before he got to come home and he had to come back in that same night. When an officer makes his standard DUI risk, which happened just last Friday night, the arrest from the initiation of the traffic stop through the collection of blood or breath evidence to the issuance of traffic charges takes an officer off the street for four to six hours. As soon as a team has an arrest, the remaining in-service officers must switch from a proactive approach to a reactive approach since staffing is at a minimum coverage. This impacts the effectiveness of our police services. Policing is very hard to predict when we, we'll need the officers we have. In the area of public safety, it is always advisable to err on the side of caution because of how quickly a quiet, uneventful night can turn quickly into a high-risk confrontation with a violent or mentally unstable individual. We do have identified times for increased calls for service, but ultimately, a serious crime can take place on any day at any time. The FBI Uniform Crime Report, UCR, indicates that officer's risk of death or serious injury is mitigated substantially when they have a second officer on the scene with them. This additional manpower will improve many areas, as I have highlighted, but absolutely none are more important than increasing our officer's safety. I apologize for that being so long, but I wanted to get all the information out to you.
Thank you, chief. And council, I'm correct that we don't, we don't necessarily have to approve the additional hiring, right? We approve the budget?
Right, you approve the budget.
Okay.
I'm not sure I agree with that.
Okay.
It does say that, uh, this is paragraph 8C, which was referenced. It says, "We shall by ordinance," which unfortunately we don't do, or have not done, "fix the total amounts of the salaries or compensation paid to employees and officers in other departments by department basis. The salaries or compensation of individual employees or officers must be consistent with the staffing plan approved as part of the annual budget process." So it seems to me we have to be a little more concerned with, you know, individual, individual hires, I think. At least that's what that says to me.
I mean, I don't have that language in friendly, but it sounds like you're approving a class of compensation that applies to individuals who hold certain positions and that wouldn't exist.
It says, "The salary or compensation of individual employees or officers must be consistent with the staffing plan approved as part of the annual budget process." So as part of our process, we approved individual salaries. So if we're going to add to that staffing plan.
Yeah, it says staffing plan, isn't it? Right, it kind of implies that we're approving a set number of people.
Yeah, that's, I would interpret it that way, too.
Yeah, but it's a staffing plan. It's not quite as specific. It's certainly not how you would write it if you were intending to require the council to hire each. The intention of this agenda item was to bring forth what might be ambiguous in terms of the budget versus the staffing plan and also let the chief speak to the needs that she has as part of her team. So if it, if council does agree, then allow the chief to, to expand. We do have that ability in addition to, even though it may be, again, not clear what are, whether it's just a budget number or staffing number.
So as you pointed out before, I think the most important point is that this is a long-term commitment, right? We're not committing for this budget year and you certainly don't want to and we certainly don't want to be changing the staffing if we're not on board with this is going to be the new number of people. Right, that are, that are going to, you know, be full-time officers, less man for leadership, for lack of a better word. I guess my question is, I think we need to really look at this from multi-year perspective on what both public safety, administrative, lifeguards, everything, what, for lack of a better word, the staffing plan you need, you guys need over the next three years. We've, we've increased spend a fair amount in these past couple of years and this is going to be increased spend. I mean, I know you're talking about shifting between seasonals and whatnot, but this is going to be increased spend. And I think we really need to understand what our staffing, what our desired target staffing plan is going forward and then on all sides, administrative and public safety. And then we need to basically look at how we're going to fund that and look from a revenue perspective, you know? Are we willing to fund this and are we willing to basically support changing our revenue picture to get the monies to pay for it? I'm reticent to do, to say go ahead until we've gotten a full picture and we've decided how we're going to pay for things on an ongoing basis. That's, that's kind of where I'm at. And I'd like to, I mean, I realize you put a lot of time into what you put together, but I'd like us to really be, be looking at, okay, this is the written plan from the police chief, this is lifeguards, and this is the administrative plan for what we want to do staffing. And then we can evaluate the, the whole thing. That's how I'd like to do it.
Of course.
I understand what your thought process is. I have, however, been working on the hiring process for the last several months and I did indicate that at some of the prior meetings. For staffing, the academy starts October 8th. I actually have seasonals that are currently with us that want to be full-time police officers that are of age, that are ready to go to the academy, that are passing all the requirements. And if I don't hire them now, they will go to other agencies, which some of them have looked at going to the state police or Georgetown or wherever there's openings. So I am, I am competing against every other agency in the state because they, everybody's hiring. I actually have people that want to come to do it, people that we've worked with as seasonals that I have seen with my own eyes, which is nice, do a good job for me. They're, they're processing the process. So if I don't move forward with hiring them and I wait for an extended period of time, they're going to be gone.
Is the only academy in October or is that just the next?
October 8th is the municipal academy. And that's, I mean, by getting them in there, it takes about five months and then they have to go on FTO for up to 12 weeks. So I'm planning to have them, if they start in the October academy, I can get three in the academy, they'll be graduating, and they, they will be full service for me by next summer before Memorial Day, which is, which would give us the staffing that we need.
So would you guys be able to put together what we talked about and have it ready for us to vote on it for August meeting? I mean, that's one option.
We can get together just for that one item.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think time is, is an element here that we want to deal with. You know, conceptually, I mean, here's a budget and I'm in favor of the chief figuring it out from there, but there is an ongoing cost and I think that's your point. Now, once we've hired that person, the benefits and all the other things that kick into that. So as long as it stays within a budget, I'm okay with it. You know, but it doesn't hurt, I guess, to have some more detail and make everybody comfortable, but that's how I feel about it.
I, I'll just make a comment. The, the current police department and as well as the perception of the police department is better than it's ever been in terms of how we're running in town. The town hall itself is operating at, at high levels and there are numerous emails that I get from residents stating the same. We all never be criticized for improving public safety, but we do need to be fiscally prudent. So I understand that. I have said to Bill, our town manager, their job is to tell us what they need and how much, you know, and what they need in order to do the job, but it's our job to figure out how to get it paid. So if there were three officers and they'd be coming in at the lowest, at the start of salary of six.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. We're talking roughly $180,000, $200,000, some of that, to that magnitude in order to have those three full-time officers coming in.
Including benefits?
Benefits is about 20%.
Right.
So, you know, 58, another 10 to 12.
Seven.
Seventy, two 20, two 30.
But are you going to, you're going to change your leadership thing along with that, right? In terms of, you're going to have leadership kind of to match that as well, right? So I'm assuming. So there'll be some increased costs with leadership costs on that side as well?
Yes, just for one. If I promote one sergeant.
Yeah. So it's called a $240,000, $250,000 investment. I know I personally support that and I personally look at things like additional fee structures, accommodation fees in town in order to support the, and, and as the hotel tax goes up, there's more of a beat towards the general fund.
I mean, to, to my question though, because it sounds like some people kind of want to do things. What, what are the administrative needs over the next couple of years for staffing?
For staffing, I would say if our part-time assistant town manager building official should retire, should retire.
But we have to let him out of that contract, correct?
Yeah, if he does retire and he's, he's on with us now, if he does retire at some point. I think the town does need a second building official to work with our current one. There's a, a lot of building, as I told you when I compared the city of Rehoboth, the number of building permits, they were at 123 and we were over 260. So the amount of work coming in there would definitely qualify us, I feel, for having a full-time second building slash assistant town manager in that position. Maintenance, right now, we have full two, two maintenance and I don't think we need any more than two maintenance because in the summer, we bring in somebody else. Lifeguards, I've talked to Captain Richmond. The, the number of stands, the number of people that we have, I know you and I talked about one stand and, and we will address that. I think we are, we are good there. Our front office, we can't handle any more people in our, in our front office, even in our new town hall. So looking three years down, down the road, I, just thinking about this commissioner would be, that one position with Mr. Diddy's would change to a full-time position.
And potentially building official as well?
No, he would be, so as Mr. Diddy's acts right now, in my absence, he is the town, town manager, but he also, he spends more time helping our building official than anything else.
So are you saying if he leaves, you want an assistant town manager full-time or are you saying you want another building official?
It would be, that person would do both. Instead of me hiring two separate people, when we went, when we go to interview and put that out for recruitment, we would be looking for somebody that would do both hats.
Both jobs.
Right, I don't think we need a separate assistant town manager, but we do need somebody that can do both.
Okay.
Right? And so we don't need two, we just, we would just need the one.
So we have one part-time now and you say we need one full-time?
He, he is three hours a day, five days a week, even though he does put in more time than that to assist our building official. Yes.
Commissioner, press editor.
Yeah, I, I certainly support what the chief wants to do. You know, I don't want to get involved in your, in your staffing plan. I mean, if, if you say you need that number of people, I want to be able to support you in doing that. My concern is that we do it appropriately and we do it the way the charter sets it out for us. Because I don't, I don't want somebody to come back to us at some point and say, well, you didn't do this or that. You know, you need to step back and, you know, there have been, as everybody in the room here well knows, there have been lawsuits in the past because the council didn't do things in the right way. And so I don't want to get, get trapped, trapped by that. We also, and, and to say, the charter does say that the town council shall so far as possible adhere to the town budget adopted under the section, this is section 22 of the charter. The staffing plan is part of that town budget. So, you know, again, my reading is, you know, we are in some sense constrained by the staffing plan that we've already approved. And if we want to change that, we can vote to do that. I don't think we can develop a new staffing plan here on the back of an envelope. It's kind of what we're doing here and estimating what the burden will be for additional police officers in any positions, in additional positions. But again, I'm going to do this the right way. I spent, we're kind of a board of directors, if you will, I think. And I spent probably 25 or 30 years in the care and feeding of boards of directors. And if you want to get the result that you want and that you need, you got to give us more information ahead of time. You, you got to set the stage for us. So you got to lead us in the direction you want us to go. And you do that with, you know, preparing the materials ahead of time so that we have a chance to evaluate them, understand what you want to do and understand what the reasons are behind it. And, you know, if we can do that, things are just going to run a lot more smooth. So anyway, this, that's, that's all I have. Not sure where that leaves us.
So I, I think what this leaves, what, I, I guess there's a few outcomes of this, this agenda item. One, I think you're hearing that you do have the support from the council to get staffing to match the needs of the community, but we're just, what we'd like to do is either in a special meeting, one thing is I don't want the three to go anywhere else. Okay? So make that very clear. But what we can do potentially for the next meeting is just show, show how much it's going to, what's going to be the change in the actual dollar figures in terms of a long-term plan of reduction of seasonals and/or additional staff and potentially identify resources or sources of funds to cover this for the next meeting.
So chief, I mean, if you want us to have a special meeting, I think the support's here to do it. If you can wait till the next scheduled meeting, that's great, but if you want us to have a special meeting and do it, it might end up being virtual for some of us.
Okay.
I had one other question that's just kind of related is that, you know, our, our personnel need is so, that's between the weekends and the summertime, right? Which you're in the middle of seeing, you know, the craziness right now, right? How, for the downtimes, how are your discussions going with, because I know you, we talked about this previously, with neighboring jurisdictions about being able to kind of have a reliable, you're my backup so that when, you know, you want to have from a safety perspective two people in coverage, but if it's 3:00 in the morning in January and one person's going to training, it'd certainly be nice if a neighboring jurisdiction and you just had an agreement that you kind of do mutual coverage, right? So you don't necessarily have to have those people. How are those discussions kind of coming?
Well, there's no mutual coverage, but if we call for help, they'll come. Like Rehoboth or Bethany will come and we go to Rehoboth and Bethany and help them as well. So there's no problem there. The, I think the concern here is that we're going to have too many people in the winter, which it's not true because you have to look at it with this increase in staffing, you're going to have two on day work and two on nights, and then you're going to have a K-9 as a power shift kind of on the nights or coming out on the weekends for special events, maybe events with the public, maybe, you know, with the kids and things like that. And then you're going to have, you know, supervisors out there, but it's never going to be. The only time we would have full staff is which we had the five-day Fourth of July weekend and, you know, especially on Fourth of July, all of us were here. But during the winter months, this affords people to be proactive. It's very hard to go, if you want to go look for guns and cars and drugs and things like that, if you're the only one working a night shift. And when I first got here, that's what was going on. These guys had no backup and no dispatcher. So as I said before, they could be laying in a ditch somewhere and nobody would know unless they walked upon them. We're not, we don't do that anymore. So now what's happening is in order to staff two at night, if someone wants to take leave or where my officer that's injured, the other officers are having to come in and fill in for those officers. So they're getting tired because these are 12-hour shifts and they're coming in to cover for other people.
And it's overtime.
Yeah, and it's overtime. So with this new plan, it will reduce ultimate costs because we'll have enough personnel if someone's on vacation, if someone's sick, for somebody already to be there to cover that shift. And in addition, this summer, I've been bringing in outside agencies on Friday and Saturday nights, the holiday weekends, I'm bringing in six, and then during the regular nights, I'm bringing in four from outside agencies. Or if our officers sign up, then they're taking their slots. But that also costs a lot of money. I had figured out from the beginning of the season till Labor Day, it's about $75,000. So this will also, doesn't totally alleviate it because we do get to such a high number of people in the summer. We're still going to need some outside slots to come in on the weekends to help us. However, with this new number, it will alleviate some of that.[1725.57] However, with this new number, it will alleviate some of that. And it's about burning out, too.
Yeah. So Chief, I think what, I think that your information that you just provided, the questions that Gary and David have had, meshed together. If we're going to invest $240,000, $250,000, where's all the cost savings going to be?
Yes.
We may not, we don't have the outside, the overtime, et cetera. And then let's see what that's your numbers. So let's have a special meeting, if so. Unless, as David said, Commissioner Jizinski said, if you need a special meeting, we'll have a special meeting. If not, we'll do it at the August meeting.
When is the August meeting? August 18th. I just looked it up for you, Chief. Is that too late? Because I don't, as the mayor said, we don't want to lose these candidates, and we want to figure out a way to make it work.
I think we discuss it with the three candidates and explain why this is happening. I think they should understand.
Yeah. If that changes and you need us to have a special meeting, we need to notice it, just let us know.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Okay? I'm going to pause again, because I've got a motion from the guest of our, in our audience that would like to come back up for updates and announcements.
I apologize, I didn't know these meetings were so efficient now that 3:02 PM, you were already done with public comments, so I missed it due to the heavy traffic. I just wanted to do this at the town meeting. Every, you all are generous enough to approve the running of the bowl. And at the Starbird, we like to keep the word fun in fundraising. And so Mike Simples here, the president of our Rehoboth Fire Department, and I just wanted to give him a check for $10,000, which brings the total to $45,000 we've donated to the fire department this year. It really just, I just want to show that Dewey businesses are giving to the fire company, because the town's doing an effort right now to do the very same. I saw the Cape Gazette had a poll in it a couple of weeks ago, should people be required to give to the fire department? I'm one of the guys that voted yes, absolutely. These guys are all volunteers, equipment, it's no different than the things the chief's dealing with. You see, we all feel sorry with the traffic, them trying to battle, get up the highway, and the things they're dealing with. And Dewey, unfortunately, has got a recent trend of some fires, which hopefully has come to an end. But it's great to see Dewey getting on board. All I'm going to ask you is to consider the name change to the Rehoboth Dewey Beach Fire Company.
Or Dewey.
Or Dewey-Rehoboth Fire. But let's work on that the next donation, the next check. But I just want to give you your check.
Thank you, Monty.
I'd also like to thank you guys for doing what you do with the, matching the grant funds that we get donations into, you guys and to us. This year's been a very busy year. Just for example, over Fourth of July weekend, from the first to the fifth, we ran 87 ambulance calls just during that period, and over 30 fire calls during that short period of time. And of course, it covers a vast area. And again, the traffic, as you guys know, backs up through Dewey Beach, makes it hard for us to get around. Chief Snyder was on his way down here, but he got stuck up on the other side of Midway. Called me, said, jump on your scooter, zip down from there. Forgot a mile real quick.
Do we have fire scooters?
Oh, this one was. But again, thank you guys for all you do for us, and I'm glad we continue to work with you.
Thank you.
And hopefully, over the next few years, with you having your meetings, we can get people down here at the meetings to give you an idea of what we're doing, what our totals look like, try to break it down for what Dewey's got, what we're getting out. And we'd like to thank Monty for all he does to help us and the participation we get from the Starbird and his group. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Okay, before we get on to number six, just want to make sure, is there anyone out there for public comment?
Yes. David Moskowitz is.
Let him come through. Mr. Moskowitz.
Yeah. So there was no supporting documents concerning this major change, and I'm just very thankful to discuss only item, and because otherwise it'd be a FOIA violation, and the proper information should be posted ahead of the next meeting. But I also don't think people understand what Senate Bill 92 would do, which just recently passed. It could mean the town is unionized and also has to deal with other public employee issues. I don't think anyone is factoring in pension costs, how much union negotiation will cost, or the outcome of being unionized, and the paid legal support needed once the town is unionized. This would put us above the 25 threshold. Most towns are cutting back due to the economy. This will put costs on steroids that needs to be properly planned for. And it needs to be done, because I just don't think anyone is thinking about the actual future. So I really hope you do at the next meeting.
Well, thank you, sir. I disagree, I think we're all thinking about the future. Number six, discuss a possible vote on ordinance to amend Chapter 65, Article 1, Ocean Beach uses and activities of municipal code to grant the police chief the authority to close the beach. So I'll open this up for...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I witnessed over, from June 30th to actually July 2nd, large crowds of juveniles on the beach. They were using an app where, you may not even know the other folks that are on this app, but you say, hey, we're meeting here because there's alcohol, or we're meeting here because there's fireworks, or we're meeting here because of reason. You put that out and it goes to all the different people, and then all those people, they don't even know each other, but they all show up. We had a large crowd show up on Daggersworthy Street on July 2nd. We had an incident on the beach. Lifeguards were down there, working their nights, trying to keep things under control. Police department had to come down for that. And then I think you saw some of the concerns from some of the emails, the people that lived on Daggersworthy Street. So I was thinking, while I was down there, I was like, well, what if we wanted to close the beach tonight? Now, we have to weigh the people that have the bonfires that have paid for them, we have to take all that into consideration, but we also have to take into consideration the safety of the town. And when I look through the charter and the code, I found that the lifeguard captain can close the beach, I found the mayor, under certain situations, can close the whole town, including businesses. But I didn't see anything that gave the chief, except for crime scenes. So if there was an actual crime that happened on the beach and she needed to, or he needed to, say, this area of the beach is closed, she can certainly do that. But I didn't see in there where it gave her the authority just to say, hey, there's a huge problem tonight on the beach, we're basically going from one beach to the next beach or streets with these juveniles, this is an example of juveniles running around. It would have been nice if the chief would have said, hey, at 10:30 tonight, the beach is closed, and we're going to put yellow police tape across all the entrances to the beach at the dune crossings, and just close the beach off until we can get a handle on this. But I didn't see in there where it gave her the authority to do that. Maybe it should be the chief has the authority to do that after approval from either the town manager or the mayor. I don't know, but I do think we need to give her, the chief, the ability to close the beach when necessary for public safety.
You know, Mrs. Albrecht, I would assume that the chief always would have had that ability as the chief of police. Counsel, do you want to weigh in?
I would have assumed the same thing. I think there might be some general authorities that we could hang our hat on to support that contention, in an effort to maintain public safety. I would think that, I would rather deal with the consequences of it being unauthorized beach closing than deal with somebody getting, you know, hurt in the circumstance that could have been created.
Commissioner Presser.
Yeah, I mean, I would have argued that the chief already has that power as well. I mean, I think you have police powers within the jurisdictional limits of the town. And if the beach is within the jurisdictional limits, I mean, it's just like any public street, I would think you could close a public street, any public street in town, if you believe there's a need to try to avert some sort of criminal activity or a threat to public safety. So I don't see the beach being any different.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree also, but maybe what we can do is make that, as we go through a complete charter review in the off-season.
Right.
And submit a charter change to, in January, we'll make that very clear.
So our town manager did bring up one issue that I think is kind of sensitive. When this type of thing tends to happen, probably is most likely a Friday or Saturday night in the summer, I would imagine. Some of those people have bonfire permits, it's not just five of them sitting around, some of them hire caterers and go to pretty significant expense to have a nice get-together. So if you're ever thinking of doing it, closing probably a section of the beach rather than the entire mile north and south, might make sense and be able to avoid a situation where someone felt like they spent a large sum of money and basically had to throw a bunch of food away.
That's understood.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
I thought we, as I understood the conversation, I thought we said it was...
She has the authority.
She has the authority?
Without us doing it.
We don't need the orders, no. But she has the authority, but we will make a very clear in the charter in the off-season that she does, even though it's applied.
The chief has powers that she didn't know she had. It's a lovely thing.
Oh, yes, she does. She knows what she's got. Number seven, discuss a possible vote on ordinance to amend Chapter 93 fees and Chapter 158 streets and parking of municipal code to extended dates, which parking fees are in effect. Town manager?
So right now, if we're talking about going from May 1st to October 1st, is that correct, Mr. Mayor? Right?
Yes.
So just some rough analysis on the numbers from May 1st to May 15th, and then from September 15th to October 1st. We're looking at approximately an increase in parking during that time of about $90,000, additional money coming in for those 30 days. 15 on the front, 15 on the back, according to our parking folks. We also would be in line with Lewis, which is also starting at May 1st. I know Rehoboth is still from May 15th to September 15th, but then again, they don't have some of the financial constraints that we have when it comes to funding our budget. Where we rely heavily on parking. That's one of the revenues here in Dewey Beach we rely heavily on is parking for our budget. And for us to give away days or not to take advantage of those, 15 in the front and 15 in the back, I think is an opportunity missed.
Just also for the record, just like to point out to you, it is, it's May 15th, September 15th right now for Bethany, Rehoboth, and Dewey. Lewis goes from May 1 to October 14th, and Ocean City currently goes from April 1st to October 31st. So with that, I'll open up the council for any conversation.
I, I'm looking at both of these kind of combined, you know, hours and whatnot. And it looks like, is the proposal to get rid of the Monday to Wednesday evening free parking as well?
That's a second issue.
Yeah, but it's all kind of, I don't know, it's kind of one kind of package. I know that that's big for the both, you know, the bonfires on the beach and the different things that we do, for people to be able to come and enjoy that. And I know the businesses like the little boost they feel like they can get in terms of the weekday evening, evening patronage. My main thing with these is, it kind of goes back to what I asked for before. I want us to look at what our increased funding need is in total and say, what changes are we going to make to map towards all of our increased things, right? And parking is a key element of that, but there's other things that we get a lot of revenue out of, too. And I mean, my preference would be for us to be looking at, what is our increased funding need, and then what is our tax and fine regime going to be to meet that need, rather than just raising it and then saying, well, we'll just do whatever. You know, that's, my preference would be to kind of understand what the need is and then raise it to match it. That's, you know, and it's not necessarily just parking that we would raise.
Mr. Gibbings?
So part of why we do parking is not, well, we do parking for raising revenue, we also do parking to have turnover of the spots, so that as people come to town, new people can also find places to spot, talk, park. We have been talking about how we are no longer just a summer town, and I think that having parking fees from May 1st to September 30th kind of matches where the town is now. So I'm very comfortable with expanding there. I would be more hesitant to take away the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday free. I kind of, I think that is a draw, that makes it different, people are more willing to come into town, which gets more people at our restaurants. So I know we're supposed to talk the two separately, but...
We decided to combine them.
Yeah, I'm having trouble with boundaries today. You want to talk about that?
No, I don't.
I agree with Elizabeth on that. What is, what do we estimate the revenue giveaway that we do with free Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays?
Yeah, approximately $200,000. That's a huge amount. We're giving away money. Every other town isn't.
$200,000?
And you could talk about bonfires and movies. You could talk about bonfires and movies. Not everybody that goes down there walks from in town, but a lot of them do. You're getting a free movie and a free bonfire, and if you're paying for parking, you're paying $6.
Right.
$3 an hour. And you could take your whole family to a movie for free on the beach. You could take your family to a free bonfire on the beach.
But at $6, how many, to get the $200,000 divided by $6, I mean, that's a lot of people. I don't think we get that many people with the $200,000.
Mr. Mayor, by making these two parking, by, Mr. Mayor, by making these two parking changes, we have paid for the police.
Yes.
I didn't say that. It'll be something. Let me just also state another, the element, the town manager is correct, this is a, this is something that's unique to Dewey on the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. There's nothing stopping us from necessarily issuing bonfire parking or and/or beach movie passes for those that are coming in, they can just throw it on their windshield of the car. Most of the people that do go to the movies, for example, are local residents, and that's what I see, is them bringing their chairs up, and it's a great benefit. This, the initial thought process of moving it to May 1st also had to do with, mostly with the revenue side of it, but we also have a lot of issues with crowds in that beginning part of May when we don't have parking and going to the bars and staying late. So that was part of the initial thought, and if we had parking, then there's at least, there's a revenue generation. And I don't think we're really taking that much away from the restaurants, I think they can survive on the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. But...
Is this supposed to be effective next year?
Next year.
Next year.
Commissioner Presser, great. I'll just leave you.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm a little surprised at the estimate for the beginning of May and the end of September. It sounds a little high to me. I'm a little skeptical, in part because I, you know, I'm very familiar with new numbers a lot, and so I'd like to see the background on that. Not quite as surprised at how much money we're giving up on Monday through Wednesday. That's potentially certainly a lot of money, obviously.
That's a staggering number.
The main issue I have right now, and I don't, I don't oppose either of these ideas necessarily, the main issue I have is, why are we rushing to judgment on this? This doesn't take effect until next May, potentially. And this is the first public discussion we have made about either of these changes. And yet, you know, we have advertised to the public, you know, we have parking, free parking on Monday through Wednesday. I think it's ingrained in most people's minds that the parking permits and the meters are in effect from May 15th to September 15th. Why don't we tell people more about what it is we plan to do, what we're considering doing? You've got a newsletter that's going out August 1, you have an email list, you could use that email list to inform people about it, use the newsletter to inform people, invite public comment. So then when we do actually make a decision on these two things, we can say, we have really given the public ample notification and ample opportunity to give us their thoughts about making these changes. So from my perspective, I would like to table both of these until at least the next meeting, if not September, and provide the communication to the public, let them know what's being considered here, and then we can move forward with, hopefully, a better, more, with better, more and more information from the public.
Any other council comment?
I like Gary's idea.
Just one other thing, just, July 4th this year was on a Tuesday night, we had thousands of people in town, parking was free. We missed a huge opportunity for money that night. And don't get me wrong, the fireworks are great, it's great that Highway 1 does that, thank you, Alex Fireys, and, but I mean, as revenue, to run the town, and I understand with the plan and everything, but fuel keeps going up, our salaries for our employees, we're going to increase those as they go up, our insurance goes up, all those things go up, and we need revenue to pay for that. The days of us trying to run the town by just scooting by, not providing public safety, and the things that we're trying to do to make the town better, we really need to move in a positive direction to try to get this done. And I understand we want public comment on this, this was posted, and I don't know if there is public comment on this, Kate, but this was posted, right, last Friday? So I'm just, I mean, it was posted last Friday.
Well, we have our discussion about staffing plans with financials behind it. I think it would be great to also have this discussion with financials behind it to match it.
But I think what I'm hearing from councils is that all of us are, we're in favor of having a sustainable, having additional revenue coming in to support the public safety needs. And we're in favor of potentially adding the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, as well as the shoulder out to May 1st to September 30th. Let's get some additional public comments in, and have that as well, the staffing plan reviewed in August, as a overall positive of positives and minuses, sources and uses of funds. of funds. I see, I see somebody leaning for public comment, so.
Public, only public business guy here, Steve Montgomery, Starboard.
Which Starboard do you represent?
At all. I mean, I would respectfully kind of disagree with some of what you're saying. I 1,000% agree with the revenue. 1,000% agree with everything the police needs. You know, I'm all in on all that stuff. My, hear me out on this is, is the guy that's kind of been behind starting the Monday through Wednesday parking, the guy that hosts an awful lot of events, the first two weeks of March, the last two weeks of September this year. We were hosting the Delaware State Police 100 year anniversary this September. The reason that the week it is is because the parking permits are not in effect. There are so many events that we do after September 5th. The beach party, all the rules in Dewey Beach, we know are May 15th to September 15th for a reason. Everybody knows the summer season that, I'll use COVID as an example. Messaging is such a huge deal that we learned during COVID, when the governor's office came out and said the bars were closed, they meant physical bars. Well, the media went crazy because the restaurants, things were open, but the messaging got screwed up. And, you know, we learned a big lesson on messaging. Dewey, the businesses, the chamber, the business partnership have worked really hard over the years to build this as a well-rounded family town. My opinion, if you, you know, again, I understand needing money, the revenue, but you give up the free Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, there are a lot of people that come into this town. Look at our streets. I mean, I don't know where the revenue projections are coming from. There's no, there's no cars parked on Baird Avenue Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays. There's, there's no cars on the streets on the weekdays. That's where this whole thing came from was because the streets are fairly empty on those days. And it was a marketing way to get people to come into Dewey Beach. The minute we do it, and we're now different from Rehoboth and Bethany, and as a business owner in Bethany, I can tell you our busiest day in September is September 16th. We do so, and all the locals come back out to all the businesses. It's a holiday in Bethany and it's really good for businesses. The minute the Cape Gazette reports that Dewey is now extended, and I get it, I understand the money, I think we lose people coming to Dewey. And as a business owner, I don't think it's good to push people away. I will work with the, every which way we can to raise more money. I think, you know, we are the only town without a property tax. We know that's a bad word in Dewey, but there are revenue streams we've discussed to help get money in. I just, as a business hat on, worry about going away from what we've been doing for so many years and how long it's taken to build the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I mean, 500 people on the beach, you know, are the businesses going to donate to do that after, when, when we take away parking? I don't know. I mean, there's things that it may just get less incentivized if we can't, why put money to do it when people aren't going to drive into the beach and come eat in restaurants the way they're doing now Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? So, and that's the Monday, there's two different arguments, the Monday through Wednesday and the early and late. I just, I know so many people that plan their weddings, plan their stuff on the weeks where there's, I mean, number one, the hotels are a little cheaper there, but it's the parking permit thing. They're so, it's confusing. And our town manager did such a great job with the parking meters this year trying to, is the word, unconfuse our parking? And it's, it takes a long time. You know, it takes a long time in a business to get a special known to keep, it's, the messaging part takes so long that as Gary said, to talk about it in July, it's going to freak people out a little bit during the middle of the season. But, you know, I would ask that the town manager, the mayor have a meeting maybe with the business partnership in September to discuss it, just to hear everybody's two cents. Because again, we all work really well together in this town and everyone, I'm pretty sure would want it, you know, nobody's reading the agenda that's in the business world in July to know that something was noticed five or six or 10 days ago. So nobody knows this is on this agenda that I'm aware of. So I would just say, maybe slow it down and talk about it so that all things are considered. You know, we're always donating to police, fire, whatever. We're always doing what we can do. We want to be able to have a seat at the table just to talk about it. Because I think there's a more, more that you may not consider that we might lose, even though I 1,000% agree needing the revenue and it seems like easy money to grab.
Thank you.
One other point?
Yes, sir.
Not specifically to this, but I think this is a good, a good example of putting something on the agenda without having explanatory materials about it. Yes, it was posted last Friday, but unless you read the draft ordinance carefully, you wouldn't know what either of these agenda items are about. Now, the Cape Gazette may have done something on it. I think I recall reading something about it, but, yeah, but not everybody reads the Cape Gazette. Really need to, you need to build support for these kinds of things, particularly when you have a change that is as important about this, both perhaps to the public and the businesses, but also as a source of revenue for, for the town. You really need to build a case for it so that people understand, people have a chance to comment, and we get the range of opinion that we really need to make a good decision. And again, this is, that's an example. I think we need, need to do that for each and every agenda item.
Yeah, I talked to Carol Everhart too. I think she has some stuff to weigh in. She's on vacation this week, so it'd probably be good to get her input as well.
Rehoboth is pretty crowded Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday.
And they do the meterless Monday.
All right, so we, what we're going to do, we're going to table seven and eight. We're going to have that as public, you're going to put it out in the newsletter coming to the end of July, potentially put on the August agenda as well as the addition to the staffing, look at all those things combined. I understand both sides of the argument and supporting it. All right. Moving on to number nine, discussing possible vote on ordinance to amend Chapter 85, 1321A, curfew for minors with municipal code to revise penalties for violation of the nightly curfew for minors. Mr. Zolper.
So right now, Monday through Thursday, it's 11 o'clock for minors and Friday and Saturday, it's midnight. Given the amount of minors we had in town, not only during the June bug week, which Captain Richmond talked about, but also June 30th through July 4th, and the experience, and the chief can talk a little bit about that and property damage and the arrests and one juvenile had to be called, they were passed out. We really need to be able to point to something with these, with the signs that I showed earlier and say, look, you could get a fine up to $300 for not, you know, obeying the curfew. And, and we're not asking the police department to go right out and start issuing these citations to all the juveniles, but we want to have something there that we can point to and say, you know, it's, it's midnight, it's a Thursday night, and this is your warning. If not, you will be issued a citation for $300. The town is not here to babysit these teenagers. We don't have the ability to babysit them. As you've heard from the chief, she doesn't even have the manpower, the person power at this time to even have her police department function as she thinks it should, let alone hundreds of teens that were roaming around, especially on those nights in question. So I think this is needed. Again, it's not about making money. It's not about making money at all. It's about showing a teen that, hey, you can be fined up to $300. That gets their attention instead of just $100. And with that, it's okay, I'd like the chief to talk about what she saw when she was out during those nights.
Well, it was complete chaos with the juveniles. Unfortunately, we pretty much, they would be on the Wings to Go parking lot and then we would chase them off there and then they would go down to X Worthy. And then we had all the emails after, you know, they're going on the beach, they're urinating on people's property, they're throwing up on people's property, they're having sex in people's yards or on the beach drinking alcohol, basically doing everything they shouldn't be doing. They're all underage. So we're basically just chasing up, chasing them up and down the streets and off parking lots. There really is nothing unfortunately for teenagers to do in our town. You know, the bars and restaurants, you have to be 21 to get into. The kids we were dealing with were anywhere from the age, you know, from 12 and up. They would go to the Wings to Go parking lot in a group of 10 and maybe two of them would buy food. All the ownership there and all the businesses, I walk and I talk to them, they, they want to have people to come eat their food, but they don't want all those kids hanging out because then it keeps other people, and especially adults, from coming in when there's hordes of juveniles just standing around. They're loud. They like to play fight and do different things. They're very disrespectful. They weren't listening to us. We had several foot chases with several of them that we arrested. And then when the parents arrived, they seemed to have an attitude with us about the fact that their children were stopped and pretty much felt like we were harassing them. But we said, you know, you know, we have a curfew, you know, they're drinking and doing things like this, which they shouldn't be doing. So I did some research for the surrounding jurisdictions. The one thing I would like to see would be the curfew change. Bethany's curfew is from 11 to 5:00. Every day of the week. There is no Friday and Saturday night change to midnight. I don't feel there's a reason to keep the, the loud juveniles out till midnight when there's nothing for them to go into. The only thing we have for them to go into is the little miniature golf. And I can assure you, they don't go there. The main reason that most of the juveniles are wandering around our town is you'll see them, a lot of them carrying backpacks. They get alcohol. They're there to drink and get into trouble and they disrespect all the property owners and, and the people that live on the beach. They throw their trash everywhere. So I don't understand why we would allow them to stay out later at night when there's, it's not like Rehoboth where there's an arcade and a boardwalk and amusement rides to go on and lots of stores to shop in. We really just don't have the setup for juveniles to do anything but hang out on the beach or hang out in hordes on, in front of the different spaces. And that's basically what we do. We run them around town back and forth. We end up chasing them, you know? Sometimes people get hurt when they fall to the ground, when we have to get them. There's no respect. And I just think it's a, it's bad. I think we, and if we do increase the fine from $100, and we don't have the signs posted, so I think that will be a first thing, you know, they'll get a warning. But with the signs being posted, just like we now have the no loitering and no trespassing signs on that parking lot, it'll, it lets the public know that, hey, there is a curfew in Dewey and we can advertise that by posting in the newsletter and things like that. But it allows them, they know that, you know, you're not supposed to be out at this time of night. And right now, we don't have those signs posted. But the increase in fine, you know, $100 fine is pretty, pretty small. So an increase in a fine is a little bit harder hit when maybe a parent might take it more seriously when their child got stopped and we had to write the citation and hand that to the parent for $300. We did hear a lot of feedback from juveniles that their parents dropped them off from Rehoboth and dropped them off in Dewey. And I had one of the parents that picked up the child saying, oh, I know there's nothing for them to do in Dewey, but we dropped them off anyway. So Bethany Beach's curfew is 11 to 5:00 a.m. They, they only have a $100 fine. They have their underage drinking fine of up to $100. Lewis has no curfew. Same thing, they have a $100 fine for underage drinking. Ocean City has no curfew, which is surprising with all the problems they have, but they charge up to a $500 fine, arrest and a citation for their underage drinking. And Rehoboth also does not have a curfew, but they charge a $100 fine for underage drinking. So really, the only two beach towns that are near us is Bethany and their curfew's from 11 to 5:00 every day of the week. And then there's us. And ours currently is Sunday through Thursday. They can stay out till 11:00. And then Friday and Saturday night, they're allowed to be out till 12:00. But as I said before, if there's nowhere for them to go and nothing for them to do, why do they need to be out until 12 o'clock at night on Friday and Saturday? Because then they're just causing more problems for us.
Thank you, Chief.
Might I?
Yes.
And I'm assuming that if the child is out with the, the minor's out with the parent, that's okay?
That doesn't apply.
It's in our code, I think for that. I think one guy can work for work.
Yeah, that doesn't apply either. I'm talking about the hordes of juveniles.
If they're going from one point to the next, it's, they're fine.
Just, that's what the Christiana Mall does. You have to be with an adult after a certain time. The other thing, are minors and parents both being fined for an event? Or is it just?
Well, you can, but here's the thing about, we didn't cite minors for that. We cited them for other things. If you take a minor in, let's say for a curfew violation, when we had hundreds of minors all over town that 4th of July weekend, an officer, probably a seasonal, would take them to the station. We then have to call a parent and some of these kids were from Wilmington and we had to wait two hours for them to get to us. So the officer has to stay with the child because you can't put them in a jail cell or anything like that. You're not putting them in handcuffs. So they're sitting at the station with an officer until the parent arrives and then the citation is filled out and they're released to a parent. And there's other, like if it's a disorderly conduct or anything like that, and if it's a criminal citation, it has to go through the juvenile justice system, so that's handled differently. So everything we do, we can't hand a juvenile a citation. So anytime we want to cite any juvenile, we have to bring them to the station, take them into our custody and wait with them for a parent to arrive. So as you can see with our staffing shortages and me bringing in other officers from outside, the last thing I want to do is have to sit, if I have, you know, 10 juveniles, I have to bring in for a curfew and sit with them and wait for parents to come. And you'd be surprised how long it's, how hard it is to reach some of these parents. And then they have an attitude when they come to pick the children up.
It's still a deterrent, what you're asking for.
It is a deterrent.
So, you know, my perspective is, I'm, I'm okay with motioning to accept this ordinance as written. And if Fred's okay with it and changing the time to 11 o'clock, seven days a week, if Fred's okay with that.
Yeah, simplify it.
Commissioner?
Right, it's fine with me.
Then do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? Is there a public comment? Your, it's, mic's open for public comment. David. Yes, Ms. Moskowitz.
Well, two things. One is, again, you notice changing the fine but not changing the time. So I don't see how you could, I can see how you could do one, but you can't do another. That should occur at a separate meeting. You need to actually notice what you're going to be doing by FOIA laws. The town used to have a FOIA coordinator. It would be good if everyone took FOIA training. And it's the question of, I, I didn't, I missed part of the conversation, but how many tickets were given out at $100? What the police chief described is multiple crimes, like alcohol tickets could be given and things of that nature, but the town's, instead of, is just going to take a hands-off approach and say, hey, we're going to post that it's going to be $300 and hope for the best. And that's not really a deterrent. Giving out some alcohol tickets to underage minors would probably be a better deterrent. The reason why some of the Dewey fines is low is also because the town wants people to pay them and not appeal to Georgetown, which will dismiss it because what the state recognizes as a crime may not be what Dewey does. And then are we sure the kids were 18, under 18? Because in the past, the town used that law to pull over kids who are over 18. One such case, the town arrested a town resident who was a Life Guard's honor student and almost had to deal with a massive lawsuit. So this law needs to be used with very caution because many people can appear under 18 and actually be over 18. So, I, I mean, the town voted for the 300, but I, I just don't understand how the time was changed when it wasn't noticed.
Thank you. We have more public comment.
More Steve Montgomery. I, I completely agree with you. You and I have talked about this on the streets. I've never seen anything like 4th of July as far as young kids, other than the two weeks of beach week. Then I think what I said earlier about the parking, the messaging has got to get out to parents. Dewey, you know, we had a changeover in chief and stuff this year. We used to work very hard with high school week, senior week, going to high schools, going to DC, going to stuff, getting the parents. I think you and I looked at each other, or me and somebody the other night, two weeks ago, go, where are their parents? And it was just, I know a lot of these parents and they're like, my, my kids are okay down there, aren't they? I'm like, no, they should not be on the streets. And my wife says to me every morning, why are they on the streets? They shouldn't be out there. I mean, these are kids, these are, you know, and the, the drinking, I don't know how, if Dewey can arrest for alcohol, I guess if they see alcohol, I know that ABC and DATE has offered to help us, we should probably, I mean, we're getting late in the season now, but get them even more involved on the streets because they're pretty intimidating, the DATE agents walking up and down the street and just checking backpacks and doing whatever it is they can do. They're not afraid to check it. And that's what, that's what DATE is really enforcing or looking into is more 14, 15, 16-year-old kids that are trying to drink alcohol than 20-year-olds trying to sneak in bars and restaurants. Because that's what's, you know, the difference in 15 today, at 15, we're all 15, is the stuff tastes good today. Back when we were 15, it was all beer and it didn't taste good. Now it's Truly and High Noon and, you know, these kids are unfortunately learning about alcohol at younger ages, but there is nothing to do. And you and I have spent many nights sitting and looking at the kids just hanging out on the streets. There's nowhere to do. They just kind of, they're looking to kind of instigate something, look into, and there's, there's nowhere to go but to walk out in front of the busy restaurants and bars and nightlife in Dewey. So I think the market, if we do something here and we can get the Gazette behind it to let the local parents know that Dewey's not a place for kids after 11, it might, might local parents know that Dewey's not a place for kids after 11, it might be a big, big push for us.
Well, additional comment, if I remember correctly, there was a minor last year or the year before who was on a bike and got hit by a car, and the person was intoxicated. So this is another compounding. I think that the public comment from Mr. Moskowitz may be accurate in the sense that we can, based upon how the wording on the agenda and as for counsel to review, to advise, that we can increase the fine, but we may not be able to change the timing. I think it's probably not crystal clear. I would look to the title of the ordinance, which says, "An ordinance to amend Chapter 185-11 or 1321A, curfew for minors of the municipal code of the town of Dewey Beach." If it stopped right there, then I think you'd have the authority to amend it in any number of different ways beyond what are shown in this, because you are not restricted only to consider the actual proposed amendment. You have the right to come up with changes to what's proposed that come out of the deliberations that you have and the information that you get and any public comment that you get during the process of rulemaking. The title of this ordinance though does go on to say, "To revise the penalties for violation of the nightly curfew for minors," which then has a limiting effect on the notice. So it's oftentimes a good idea to have a title to the ordinance that is restrictive. Other times, you're better off to have one that's more general so that you have the authority to be, to consider new ideas, so long as they come under the heading of this Chapter 85-1321A, curfew for minors. So I think it's a closer call than one might have you believe, but the most of... I'd prefer that we do it the right way, and we could...
Clearest way.
And from that perspective, that we do have, based upon what was on the public agenda, the ability to approve the fine increase, and if we need to amend...
We can amend that at the next meeting.
Amen at the next meeting.
I'll modify my motion to be just the $300 one.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll add the timeline in terms of the, as an agenda item for next month's meeting. Review and discuss the progress for the timeline for the new town hall and police station. Town manager just...
So we're in the second phase of, with GMV. We have a meeting next week with them, with Morgan, who's overseeing the project, and Dean. We are in the engineering, mechanical, plumbing, electrical phase, where now that we've decided on what the building will look like, and the interior, what it will, as far as the rooms and the layout, now they're going to come back and say, "Okay, this is where your Cat 5 wire needs to go. This is where the outlet, this is plumbing." They're going to give us a couple of different options, whether we want ductless units in each room, or whether we want to have one big unit, we want to have cellar on the roof. We're going to be looking at all those in a number of different meetings with them. So this is the next phase as we move on. We expect it to be done sometime this spring.
This fall or this spring?
This spring. We changed the way the building was, because we were no longer having parking underneath. That changed the Denrick Water Conservation runoff that they had started to work on. They have to come back and redo that. Plus, we took away seven parking spots, which may affect the Del Dot part of it with the entrance on and off Rodney Street. If I'm wrong, and I don't know, Jim, if you're still on there, is that correct? Maybe he's not there.
Yes, it is correct.
So those are two things that could take some time while we're doing this.
So you're saying you were not going to, you're not going to have plans to start bidding out until next...
Spring, possibly. Yeah. And if we went with a different company instead of GMV, it wouldn't even take longer. Jim looked into that also. I don't know, Jim, do you have any extra comment?
Yeah, I understand that. I did contact a Remington vernor to go over what delay would be, and their thought was, because of so many changes in federal laws regarding commercial buildings and so forth, engineering would probably take, to get an engineer, would take at least an additional six months to get somebody to actually start the work, because everybody's booked out.
Any council comments, questions? Okay. Keep it a surprise, Bill, as we move forward. I was hoping that we'd be able to see something moving forward in the fall. Okay. Number 11, review the financials, June financials. The financials are on the, on our site, as well as they're here for the public. Commissioners, any questions in the town on the financials?
I do have questions. I have a couple of comments, as you might expect.
Sure, sir.
It's still a little frustrating trying to deal with the financial reports, because I don't think we get the picture that we'd all like to see, and that is, how are we really tracking with the operating budget that we approved last year? If you look at the financial summary, and you look at the bottom line here, it looks like we're, you know, like $101,000 in the hole, and, you know, we're really pretty far off from what we budgeted. I don't think that's right, because there are a number of expenditures in there for equipment expenditures, streets and infrastructure, and there may even be some professional fees that are being paid out of other revenues that are not reflected in the top of this financial summary. So it just seems to me as a simple, kind of an easy guideline, if we could get a way of putting together a report that takes out some of those, or at least reports separately, some of those expenditures that are being paid for by, through other sources of funds that are not included in the funding streams that are reflected above. I think if you do that, if you make some adjustments, you know, we're probably, you know, our net income right now would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of $277,000 as opposed to what we budgeted, which is about $302. So I think we're actually doing pretty well, you know, much better than is reflected in the financial summary. So if we could work toward doing that, I think we'd all be a lot better informed if we had all some questions. The other way I think we could head off some questions is by going back to including in the, whether you call it the revenue expense report or the profit and loss report, putting in there a budgeted-to-date column. We used to have that in the old profit and loss reports, and somehow, I think, in all the discussions that we've had, there's been, you know, perhaps some misunderstanding that we wanted to make some changes that don't include that any longer. I mean, I think, and I know Sheena's been working with the auditors, and obviously in the context of the audit, and there are some plans on putting together some new financial reports. We haven't seen the formats for those, but, you know, one of the things that we discussed was to have a more simple, a simpler balance sheet, which reflected very clearly the balances in the key assigned funds that we have, streets and infrastructure, and capital improvements, and the building fund, and the other assigned accounts that we have. That balance sheet could be a lot more simple, could be a lot, could be more simple, could be simpler, rather. But I think for, you know, month to month, so that we can, again, better understand where things seem to be off track, and, again, send fewer questions your way to answer. If we had that budgeted column figured, budgeted-to-date, I think we'd have much better, better information about how we're tracking with budget. So those are my comments.
Any other council comments? Garrett, to your point, we had discussed last year, and, you know, right now, we are going through the audit, and once we get through this, we'll look at how to improve reporting. We had started with beginning in fund balances and the different funds, self-committed or committed, and beginning in sources and uses, certain sites going in or the uses going out for infrastructure, et cetera, so that we can reconcile the fund balances. So we'll work to get that to where it needs to be. With that, we'll move on to the next, which is, any comments? Town manager?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up, on July 30th, there's going to be a volleyball tournament down at the, on Dickinson Street and on Van Dyke Street. On both streets, we're going to have a volleyball tournament down there, and it's going to basically run from 11 till 5:00 in the afternoon. It is to raise awareness. There's going to be information and resources available on mental illness. It's to bring that more awareness to it, and the volleyball tournament's called Unlock the Light. And I have further information that I've received from this organization, and I will send it each to the commissioners so you see that. Also, as brought up earlier today, donations to the firehouse. We'll match up to $15,000 in total, so we encourage the public to go ahead. They can do that online, or they can mail it to the town hall, and we will match whatever they, whatever they donate. And again, I'd like to thank Highway One and Alex Pyrus for the fireworks. Thousands of people were in town enjoying it. It went off without a hitch this year, with the exception of the teenagers being out late at night roaming all over the town. The fireworks itself, to just see the crowds and the families here, it was, it was great. Thank Kate for getting the new mics in here. Thank you, Kate. And with that, I'm going to ask Jim to talk about DPNL and Verizon with the 5G poles, just to give you a little bit of an update. Jim?
Sure. I spoke to Claire DiNardo, who represents Verizon. Right now, they're waiting for a, an inspection for the electrical connections that they've attached to the poles that they've installed, and that department they're working with is Middle Department Inspection Agency. It's a separate agency that Del Marva Power requires for them to do their inspection, certify it. Once that is done, they will come out, meaning Del Marva Power will come out, and that's Chris Benz. They're going to schedule for meeting, a meter to be installed to energize the new sites. Once that is done, they, they said within two or three days after that, they can move the poles off the dunes. That's three of them. The one we're holding back on, the only street that we're waiting for is Cullen, and I've reached out to Kevin Moss. He hasn't gotten back to me as to where his negotiations are with Del Marva Power, so we're waiting on that. And the other pole, St. Louis, we haven't heard anything back from anybody at this point as to where they stand on power connection issues over on St. Louis Street. That's what stands as of now.
Thanks, Jim. I appreciate it. Are there any questions about that?
Yeah. Would it be possible to get that Verizon representative to come to one of our meetings? You know, they can update it. I mean, this keeps dragging and dragging and dragging, and I know it frustrates everybody, but, you know, have them come in and advise the public of what they're doing and, you know, set some expectations that they can reasonably hit. I mean...
We're not done.
Yeah, forget it. It's not going to get done.
Well, we can get Bob McGuck, and I guess he can, on a Zoom call at the next meeting. We'll ask for him to be available.
Yeah, have him come down.
Just, I'll make a comment anecdotally, Jim, but Verizon's ultra-wideband signal, which is the ones that these things are in question, it's reaching all the way down to the beach on Chesapeake Street. You know, they always kind of said, "Hey, we can't put things because of where they're reaching." And I'm just telling you, you're on the beach on Chesapeake Street, and it says UW on my phone right right on.
Thank you.
I will gladly pass that on to them, not that they really are going to care at this point. I'll be happy to pass it on.
All right, why don't we see if we can get Verizon at the next meeting?
Mr. Mayor, while we're talking about that, DPNL will be coming out and looking at, with Del Dot, the lighting from basically St. Louis Street all the way down to Chesapeake. The lighting that are currently on the poles that light King Charles up at night, a lot of those lights are not working right now, so they're going to be reevaluating. We've asked them to come out, reevaluate whether they need to put Cobra lights in, what the wattage will be. They'll be working with Del Dot to get the proper lighting on King Charles Road this, sometime between now and in the fall. And the other thing I'd like to do is just thank Sheena for her continuous work with the audit. We will have the audit, the audit will be turned into the town by August 15th. That's the requirement in the charter, so we will have the audit by August 15th. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Just to go over some stats for June. For the month of June, total agency calls for service, 543. That includes the full-time and seasonal officers. We had 110 traffic tickets, 55 parking tickets, 11 accidents, 17 criminal investigations, two DUIs, two ordinance arrests, nine criminal arrest adults, 13 warrant arrests, and 79 business checks. And for the seasonals, since they've been here, they've had 305 parking tickets, 145 civil citations, 40 criminal citations, and 63 criminal arrests. So stats are pretty decent.
So they're also doing parking besides our parking ambassadors, so we're, we're wearing that dual hat for them.
Absolutely. So they're doing a great job. I'm going to lose a couple. I think a few of them are leaving by the second, maybe the 15th of August. I currently have 11, but one of them's only part-time because he's full-time as an EMS in Lewis, so I'm going to lose two, and then a few more probably in August, because they're all going back to college, so.
The one thing I'd ask is, if it's possible, as we start tracking this, is to be able to have a year-over-year, where we compare through the end of June now compared to last year, and be able to look forward to see how we're tracking all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Commissioner Bauer?
No comments.
Commissioner Gibbings?
No comments.
Commissioner Juzinski?
No.
Commissioner Persie?
Nothing more.
And nothing from me. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.